Sparta Township Planning Board, I'd like to call this meeting to order. For the record, this meeting is being held on October 18th, 2023 at approximately 7:02 PM at the Sparta Township Municipal Building located at 65 Main Street, Sparta, New Jersey, and a livestream can be viewed on YouTube at www.youtube.com/spartatwp. Please note that adequate public notice of this meeting was given in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act. Let's begin with a salute to our flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United Nations. In the name of our government, for which we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Tori, would you please call the roll?
Councilman Dean Blumetti.
Here.
Jeanette Burke.
Here.
Vice Chairman Ron Day.
Here.
Christine Dunbar.
Here.
Bill Enright.
Here.
Justin Canales.
Here.
Angela Cassie.
Here.
Chairwoman Celeste Luciano.
Here.
Ernest Reichstad.
Here.
Mike Sylvester.
Here.
Okay, please note there's been a minor revision to tonight's agenda. Anyone here who would like a copy, please take one, they're up by the microphone. And anyone who's viewing, the revision can be downloaded from the planning board website. So let us move forward with the town council update. Councilman Blumetti?
Yeah, thank you, Chairwoman. So just a couple of quick updates on the last town council meeting. There were two large projects in town that you may have seen and been hearing about over the last six, nine months that are nearing completion or just have been completed. And the first one is the White Lake Fields expansion. And the second is the Salt Shed at the DPW building. Also during the last meeting, we had a little bit of lighter agenda, but we did have an initial discussion on short-term rentals in the township. Short-term rentals, you would think of as typically, or more lately, Airbnb, VRBO, et cetera, and also private rentals. So the council is having an ongoing policy discussion to determine if there is a need for any type of changes to the laws in town, any policy around short-term rentals. So there are more to come on that, it's going to be an ongoing conversation. And the council is looking to incorporate multiple perspectives and input, including definitely from the public. That concludes my update, thank you.
Okay. Ms. Dunbar, if you don't mind?
Yes, thank you. I was absent at the last meeting, however, I can share a couple of things. One is that our cleanup took place on Saturday morning in the drizzle, and it was very successful. We had 10 participants over on Blue Heron Road. And I believe, well, I know that at the last meeting, they looked at application 708. And the good news also is that the request for Highlands Council Open Space and Recreation Grant is in play now, thanks to the EC, Corey Stoner, and many others. So that's going forward.
Great, good news. Okay, so Mr. Day, if you wouldn't mind for the subcommittee update?
Okay, on the ordinance subcommittee? So we've had some difficult trying to schedule. We do have a meeting on the calendar now for the end of October, so we'll pick it up there. In terms of the minor site plan subcommittee, to date, we received about 51 applications, of which we resolved three tonight. That leaves six outstanding, we'll continue to work through them and hopefully get them done as quick as we can.
Okay, great. So we have some items of correspondence to address. First, we have the October 4th, 2023 Environmental Technology, Inc. application for freshwater wetlands, general permit number 16, and flood hazard area, general permit number four, Father John's Animal House Incorporated, 50 Father John's Lane, block 13002, lot number two. Mr. Collins, if I'm correct, this is just something that's informational, that's nothing to be acted on?
That's correct.
Okay. Next item, we have for October 3rd, 2023, Colliers Engineering and Design Application for Freshwater Wetlands, letter of interpretation notice to neighboring landowners, BWB Holdings, LLC, 55 Main Street, block 2001, lot 47. Mr. Collins, I also believe that this is informational as well?
That's correct.
Okay. And last item of correspondence is October 13th, 2023, the letter from the interim township manager to Allison Bitner, New Jersey Highlands Council regarding the open space and recreation plan funding. I believe this is the request for grants that Ms. Dunbar just discussed. That's informational as well. Okay, so we will move very quickly into other board business. I do have some housekeeping items, but I will open it up to the dais in case anyone else has something they'd like to mention or discuss. No? So regarding the master plan subcommittee, applications are currently being reviewed. All applicants will be contacted via email this week to request a date and time for a brief conversation regarding the expectations and commitment needed from the potential committee members. An announcement of the final committee members will be made at our meeting on November 1st. Regarding the professional search update, the board will be discussing the current applicants in closed session this evening. We expect contracts to be awarded by the town council at their first, I'm sorry, at their second meeting in December. I think it's this, yeah, I'm pretty sure it's this, December 12th. Tori, is that correct? Their meeting is December 12th? Okay.
That would be the first meeting in December?
That's the first meeting in December? Regarding the diamond chip application, Diamond Chip has chosen not to appear before the planning board on November 1st. That said, neither I nor any member of this board will be answering questions pertinent to the application or the litigation. However, we still welcome the public to comment during the open portion of the meeting. While that having been said, we now welcome the Wilson family and their representatives to the floor for concept review of 474-506 and 510 Lafayette Road, for Awesome Acres LLC, the Wilson family, block 12008, lots 20, 21, and 19, as it pertains to the PCED zone. Welcome and thank you for being here. Mr. Collins?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chairman. We'll just confirm for the record that this is a concept review under the municipal land law. A concept review is a statutorily authorized type of discussion with a property, with someone interested in property, an owner or an applicant or similar, and the public as well, about the concepts that the person has about their property. It is not a formal application in the sense of having a hearing with witnesses and although we video or did tape-record all meetings, it is not a hearing under the meaning of the municipal land law, it's a meeting. And so it's also somewhat informal. Basically, the property interested person can state what they're interested about the property, talk to you about it, you can talk to them about it, the public can comment about it. And the statements made by anyone are not binding upon either the board or the applicant in a concept review. I hope that explains it, and if you have any questions, I'd be glad to help. But we now turn to the property owner.
So this is an informal setting, as I understand it. This is not a testimonial hearing. So I guess this is more of a discussion, as I understand it.
Yes.
So I represent Awesome Acres LLC, which owns a significant area of the PCED zone located in Sparta Township. And with me is Eric Wilson, who's a member of the Wilson family, and also Jessica Caldwell, who's a planner, and Dan Wilson, who's also obviously a member of the family as well. The property in question within the PCED zone is about 37 acres, and probably takes up three-quarters of the area, and it's a completely undeveloped part of the PCED zone. The rest of the PCED zone is just really kind of a small area, and those lots actually are developed. So really, the impact of any changes of the zone fall right onto the property that the Wilson family through this Awesome Acres entity own.
Excuse me if I can't, could you talk into the microphone? I don't know if that one's better, that way the folks at home can hear me better?
Can you hear me better? Yeah. Oh, outside?
There's one up here, too, if you want to grab that.
Yeah, thank you.
So I just want to...
Frank, you never said your name, so maybe you should tell everyone your name.
Man with no name.
I don't think you did.
Frank McGovern of McGovern and Rosen. So just for an overview of things that you already know, but just a refresher, if you even need one. The PCED zone is located off of Route 15, right across from Shoprite, that whole development on that side of the road. And again, it's about 37 acres or so that our client's property is in particular is concerned about, and I just want to give you kind of an overhead shot of the properties that are involved. And so this is from Google Maps. It kind of shows a fairly current display of the area in question. Hard to see it, I was upside down myself. So Route 15 comes through here, this... Sure, that'd be great. And you'll see Route 15 coming through, obviously. You'll see the Shoprite and the development behind it and around it, and all the various buildings that have been built out. And then you'll see our property, which...
Would you mind also showing it to the livestream camera that she has in the corner?
Oh, sure.
Okay, thank you. So, and you'll see, obviously, our property, which is vacant land, which is currently being used as, I believe, a cornfield, correct? Oh, corn this season? Okay, all right. So, and as you know, over the years, this area has been part of a large area on the Route 15 corridor that was targeted for economic development. Going back to 1984, there was a master plan at that time, which was in effect, which this was part of, that economic development zone. And then over time, Route 15 did start getting developed, and as you know, by 2018, that's, I believe, when you created the PCED zone and carved that section out, which included this property here. And I believe at that time, the property across the street had already been separated out. And then, of course, it was revisited again this year, and unfortunately, the Wilsons weren't aware that this process was going through your board for review, otherwise they would have participated, since their property is directly impacted by everything you do in this zone. The concern that the Wilsons have primarily are some of these restrictions, from their point of view, are extremely severe. There's, just as examples, there's already existing restrictions in the front of the property in terms of setbacks and so forth, about what can be done. Well, now, in the rear as well, as you know, there's now a proposed setback of 300 feet, which is very extreme from our point of view, and along a very long swath of property that they own, that takes up about 11 to 12 acres of their land and just makes it useless. And that area, not only is that the requirement for that area, but it also has to be, if somebody's going to develop the property, it has to be intensely planted, for a significant investment of 11 or so acres, with no restriction as to areas to be, like saying that the wetlands are off limits, things like that. There's nothing like that. So even by its own terms, there's a question as to the viability of the ordinance in those areas, which there's a lot of wetlands in that section. Other things that we're very concerned about is the downsizing of the maximum square footage of the buildings that would be permitted in this particular area, from 40,000 square feet down to 25,000 square feet. And not only is it 25,000 square feet max, but then there's an extra provision that says, by the way, if the square footage would allow more than 1,999 gallons per day of septic flow into an individual system, then you have to reduce it even further down to a level that would bring it down under that number. So the 25,000 may not even be a real number. And the concern here is from a number of things. Not only does it, are the opportunities lost on the possibility that there may be an appropriate structure, you know, of over 25,000 square feet for this property, but it also ignores the fact that right across the street, there's a package plant that may someday provide an opportunity for sewage flow as well, which then would make septic flow from these buildings completely irrelevant, I think. Now, forget, I'm not an environmental expert on those things, or a sewage expert, but it appears that way. The other concerns have to do, the impervious coverage, 40% was the standard in that zone, and I think you'll be hearing from Ms. Caldwell, she's done a study on all the various zones in the township, and you've reduced, you're proposing a reduction down to 30%, which is just not something that has happened in the other commercial and industrial type zones within the township from what we can see. So this is an aberration, a big aberration, as you can imagine, for 10% of the property to become suddenly not usable for this type of use. And then, on top of that, there were incentives that were built in, that are built into the ordinance, to allow things like underbuilding parking, or to allow the construction of right-of-way areas to exit the property. Those incentives are removed. And why there can be no underbuilding parking, I just haven't figured out a good planning reason for that particular deletion. And I guess we'll be looking for the board, because there may be one, we just haven't So with that said, I would like to introduce Eric Wilson here, and then Eric will explain a little bit about how the property came into the family and its history a little bit, and then we'll talk with Ms. Caldwell. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Frank. I want to just first thank you all for the opportunity tonight to be here and speak with you. I serve on a planning board, I live down in Mount Arlington, I grew up in Sparta, so I understand the commitment you all make. My town's not as busy as Sparta, so we don't have as many meetings, because there's not as much going on, but I really appreciate all the, you know, the willingness to serve the town. And I just wanted to say, I've had the pleasure of meeting a few of you, but we live in a big town, and we don't all have the opportunity to know each other. My family moved to this town, my grandfather and grandmother got married and moved to this town in 1950s, after my grandfather got out of the US Navy. And they moved to Green Road, and then a few years after that, purchased a property on Houses Corner Road, where my parents, my grandmother, and my aunt live today. He worked, he was in the CBs in the Navy, which is a construction battalion of the US Navy, and then he got out of the Navy, drove a concrete truck, and started a construction business on his nights and weekends, as many people do. And eventually, that grew into his, you know, the businesses we have today. Wilson Services located on that same property, we do septic system pumping, we probably serve some of you, there's a good chance of that. And so, thank you for that as well. But it's, this town's been very good to us over the years, and we've always tried to the best of our ability, when the opportunity presents itself, to help out our fellow, you know, residents of the town, and look forward to opportunities to continue to do that. As far as development history that we've been involved with, the Wilson Drive Street, which goes from Demarest Road to Route 15, and then there's a little, kind of enclosed little road called Gale Court, that's actually named after my grandmother, whose name is Gale Wilson. Kind of an odd present, but, you know, I imagine my grandfather telling her about that at one point, and I could just imagine if my wife, if I told her I named the road after her, she'd be like, oh gee, thanks. But that was probably the largest development we've been involved with. Prior to that, there was a few small buildings in town that my grandfather had owned and repaired. We're very proud of that development, we thought it brought a lot of revenue to the town, never really met somebody that really dislikes it, brought a lot of business to the town, a lot of jobs, and we're very proud of it. And my grandfather, I think the last real development he was involved with towards the end of his life was over at 18 Sparta Avenue, there's a great building there, and he had purchased this property in 2006 or '07 with the intent of continuing his developments. And unfortunately, he got Alzheimer's, and then he passed away in 2016, so he never had the opportunity to continue that. I had the opportunity in 2018, I guess it was, early in 2018, to spend a lot of time with the Sparta Planning Board in the development of the PCED zone. And the genesis of that had been a concept review meeting that I came to in, I think, 2017 with the towns' professionals, I think you might have been involved in that, it was quite a while ago, but basically, there was the ED zone, and then at some point in time, there was this PCD zone that had been created that included just this property and one across the street. But it envisioned this development kind of like what you see across the street, but you can't build that on this property, because approximately 50% of the property is wetlands, and it's not in a convenient place. It looks like the boot of Italy coming down through the middle of the property. So the concept of having either a big parking lot or loop roads, where it's a centrally-focused kind of development, isn't even possible. So I met the professionals and said, hey, you know, obviously, the intent makes sense, but we can't do that, so how do we go about improving the zone so that, A, no one likes, boards and applicants don't like applications with like 47 variances, and it's just better planning to have a zone that really makes sense for the properties that are there? And I think we could all agree on that. So over several hearings, the PCED zone, which took elements of the old PCD, which was a very small zone, and the ED that surrounded it, and kind of blended them together, but also made some various adjustments to reflect, at the time, what we felt was, you know, appropriate uses, or maybe some that weren't appropriate, like gas stations, were previously allowed. Now they're not. That was one thing that came out of that. So just to be honest with you all, I was a little disappointed when I found out in August that the zone that just five years ago, we spent a lot of time and energy on, had been changed very quickly. It seemed like to us, maybe it didn't to you, but it seemed like it happened very quickly. We found out about it the night it was supposed to be adopted, came and asked the council for the opportunity before they were to pass it, just to come here and speak with you about it, because, again, we've been in this town a long time, and we've always been committed to improving and making Sparta better, and I think you all are too, and that's why we're all here. And we were just looking for the opportunity to work together on it and to not be adversarial. I think that just, again, benefits everyone. Tonight, we have with us our professional planner, Jessica. She's got a little more specifics, just to share with you from her expertise, some of our thoughts and comments about the proposed changes to the zone.
I know this is a little more informal, usually I get sworn in and give my qualifications, but I would just say that I am a licensed professional planner in the state of New Jersey, and I'm certified by the American Institute of Certified Planners. I have a consulting firm in Newton, and I work for over 20 municipalities. I've been in the field for almost 25 years, so have a lot of experience, primarily representing boards, but I do, at times, come over to the other sides, so I'm here representing the Wilson family tonight. I do have a couple of handouts. One is essentially a review of, you know, what happens to the property when you overlay the setbacks and some of the constraints on the property, just to show what we see as developable under the proposed zone. And then also, just to kind of remind everybody of where the property is, it's a zoning map. This shows where the PCED zone is in relation to the economic development zone, so that we can refer to those as I talk about the master plan and the proposed changes, so...
Thanks.
So I'll just start while Frank's handing those out. So, you know, what I did was I took a look at the original master plan, as well as the 2018 Master Plan Amendment that established the PCED zone, as well as looking at the zoning ordinance and the proposed changes to the zoning ordinance. So one thing that I thought was interesting, when you take a look at the zoning map that you're getting, is that the whole area has been zoned and considered by the master plan to be an economic development zone since 1984 at least. And the purpose of that designation is to allow for the location of office, research, and industrial uses in a campus-like setting, with appropriate access to Route 15 with proper buffers to adjacent uses. So, you know, some of the zoning morphed, as in the PCD zone with the PVC overlay across the street, and then this particular property in 2018 was changed into Planned Commercial Economic Development Zone, and Eric explained some of the background for that. But I think what's interesting in looking at this is that for the last 39 years, this area has been considered for these types of uses. So the office, retail, light industrial, it's been considered for this type of development. So in 2018, when the master plan was amended to implement the Planned Commercial Economic Development Zone, it covered essentially six lots, and when I say that, I'm referring to the Wilson family lot as one lot. There was a subdivision prior that created a couple internal lots, but I'm just going to refer to it as one singular lot this time. So the overall zone covers 50 acres and six lots. The Wilson property is 37 acres of that zone, and it is the only undeveloped parcel in that zone. So all of the other parcels on the front along Wilson Drive are essentially developed. And as Eric Wilson pointed out, there are significant constraints on the property. So of the 37 acres, 21 acres are wetlands and wetland buffers. So there's 16 acres of developable land left on the property. And one thing I would note, when you look at the property, not only is it all surrounded by economic development zone, it's also surrounded by economic development zone uses. So the Wilson Drive development is to the north, and to the south, you have the railway, and then you have the old concrete plant to the west. Across the street, you have the Shoprite and the Village Center development. So it's really completely surrounded, there's no residential surrounding, there's no residential zone surrounding this property, and it is isolated by surrounding development as well, and obviously fronts on a state highway, Route 15. So the purpose of the PCED zone is to promote development of large tracts of land along Route 15 in a planned setting. A planned development will prevent an adverse impact on the community by enhancing the existing light industrial uses and improving the free flow of traffic to meet the State Access Management Code. So that was the intent and purpose of the PCED zone when it was established in 2018. So some of the goals for that as well include land uses which are compatible with the predominantly light industrial character of the area, permit uses that require larger site areas which would not compete with the town center... permit uses that require larger site areas which would not compete with the town center, meaning this area here, avoid the appearance of strip retail, prohibit future curb cuts onto Route 15, so there's one established curb cut which would access Route 15, encourage internal circulation, create uses that are compatible with the environmental constraints of the Germany Flats Aquifer, and promote architectural harmony with the Planned Commercial Economic Development Zone and Planned Village Core Overlay Zone, which are across the street. So the current proposal to change the zone standards will, will really only impact this exact property, this property that, that the Wilsons own. And I believe in looking at it, it really renders it undevelopable. And I'll, I'll go through why. And I also think it's contrary to the goals and the intent and purpose of the master plan. So first of all, the changes of use. So the 2018 P C E D Master Plan went through and actually listed specific uses that were permitted, conditional, and prohibited. And not all master plan elements do that, so it was very specific about what was proposed in this zone. So here are some of the following changes that are contrary to the master plan in terms of uses. So banks and banking offices are proposed to go from permitted to conditional uses. Restaurants with drive-throughs are proposed to go from permitted to conditional uses. Miniature golf and batting cages from permitted to conditional uses. Hotels, motels, and conference centers from permitted to not permitted. Church, house of worship from permitted to conditional use. Processes of manufacture, fabrication, assembly, treatment, or packaging conversion products from permitted to not permitted. Veterinary hospitals added to the prohibited list. Indoor recreation changed from permitted to not permitted. Distribution centers, fulfillment centers, parcel hubs on prohibited list. Outdoor retail sales and retail display centers on prohibited list. Outdoor storage on the prohibited list. And warehouse and storage uses are limited to three loading docks as part of the permitted use. So all of those are contrary to what was listed in the, the P C E D Master Plan land use element. And then also, with respect to just talking about the loading docks, it did do a study that, that comes into play a couple different times during my discussion in looking at Gale Court and, and Wilson Drive in that development area. Because the P C E D Zone was clearly put in place to be compatible with and similar to the surrounding economic development zone and the surrounding developed uses in the economic development zone. And what I found in that development was that buildings ranged from about 18, 8,000 square feet all the way up to 32,000 square feet. And the lot sizes were right around two acres, which is, you know, what the lot size is in the economic development zones. That makes sense. So on two acres, you know, have 18, you know, 8,000 to, you know, 30,000 plus eight, um, square foot buildings. And when those buildings were broken down into separate units, it was four or five units. So what you often see in, in the Wilson Drive and Gale Court development are flex-use spaces. So flex-use spaces, if you're not familiar with them, are a combination, usually a small office with a warehouse space and a loading dock. And, you know, various small businesses use those types of developments of that type of unit for, you know, plumbing, all kinds of, you know, service uses. So they're really a very good small business type of use. But if you were to develop the similar types of uses to the Gale Court and Wilson Drive development, you wouldn't be able to break the building down really into more than three units because each unit really needs its own loading dock. And also, there just doesn't seem to be any real particular reason for that type of restriction. Now, I'd like to turn to the other handout that I provided that says, called Proposed P C E D Zoning Standards, and just go through sort of what happens to the property when you overlay the setbacks that are proposed. And one of the severe setbacks that Mr. McGovern mentioned is the 300-foot rear setback. So on this prop, on this overlay of the property, what you see in red are the setbacks that are required by the proposed P C E D Zone. You see proposed internal roads that would be required if you were either connecting, connecting to Gale Court, connecting to Route 15. The blue and green are wetlands and buffer areas. And then there is an orange horizontal line that goes sort of just under one of the roads that might connect to Wilson or to Gale Court through Wilson Drive, is a 300-foot setback from the front yard property. So what you have in the existing zoning is a 300-foot setback for any light industrial type of uses. So the zone intended that commercial, retail types of uses would be on the frontage of the property, which makes sense given the development across the streets, so those would be compatible type uses. And then after the 300-foot buffer would be, light industrial type uses would be permitted. So when you have a 300-foot buffer in the front and the 300-foot buffer in the rear, really within what would be permitted to be light industrial, you come down to about four acres of developable property. In front of the 300-foot buffer line and behind the 100-foot setback, which would be required from Route 15, you have about three and a half acres. So going from a 36-acre property, now you have a total of about seven and a half acres of developable property.
I just want to be clear. I mean, 300-foot setback in the back, that isn't just to buildings, right? That's actually to any impervious coverage. You can't even put.
That's correct. That's correct. So the most logical, there is a requirement for a connection within the ordinance to Gale Court or Wilson Drive. So there's, there's an intention in the ordinance to set, to have some internal circulation back into the Wilson Drive development. The location that is shown in the P C E D Master Plan, sort of going horizontally across, does not work because all of those properties are already developed. And there's existing septic systems and existing improvements within that potential right-of-way. The really logical location is in the northwest corner, near block, I guess it's 12008 Lot 9, which is the town's well property. Now, the other thing that this proposed ordinance does is says that nothing can be within 50 feet of that property, of the property. So there is an existing roadway that connects to Gale Court from that property. So what we show is a 50-foot buffer around where the wellheads are. But we think it'd be much more reasonable to put a buffer around where the wells are and allow access if the intent of the zone is to connect to Gale Court and Wilson Drive over existing right-of-way that the town already owns. So that would at least make sense and be possible. Whereas in the other location, it just really isn't possible for a developer to connect in that location. The other issue with, with the rear buffer is, is just the stated reasoning behind the rear buffer. It says that it's to mitigate potential impacts of adverse incompatible uses, promote environmental protection, enhance visual aesthetics, and provide a transition between adjacent land uses. As we saw in the surrounding zone map, all of the uses within the area are compatible with the uses proposed in the P C E D Zone. So there's no clear planning reason to buffer this property from adjacent E D uses. Much of the rear of the property is also wetlands and wetland transition areas, which are not flat-out permitted to be planted without specific permission from the D E P and specific reasoning to do so. And then with respect to visual impacts on the rear of the property, there's no right-of-way along the rear of the property. There's no visual corridors to the rear of the property. The public frontage of the property is on the front along Route 15. So visual buffering is unclear what's being visually buffered.
Just so, I'm going to interrupt you for a second. But just so you know, this is a lot of consternation in the Wilson family. We cannot figure out what the reasoning is behind putting such a significant buffer in the back. We don't know what it is that's being protected, screened, whatever. I mean, it's in the rear of the property. Behind that is the diamond chip property, as I understand it. And there's, there's really, I mean, the visual comes from Route 15 to that side of the property. If it's intended to protect something from view that's on our property, that's not accomplishing it from Route 15 anyway. And the distance from Route 15 is probably over, like, close to 1,000 feet. So it's just, I guess what we're looking for, and we can't find it in the record, we can't see any, find any studies, and maybe you haven't, as you created these standards, what the reasoning is behind that significant. And that's something we could talk about in a bit. Sorry to interrupt.
No problem. So as I mentioned, bringing down the overall developable area of the property based on the setbacks constraints, the need for connectivity to Wilson Drive or Gale Court only leaves about 20% of the property developable. And with the significant cost to connect to Route 15, to complete a traffic light turning movement, and to add in these right-of-way connections, it just, it, it would be, I think, unfeasible to do any development on this property. The other concern, one of the other concerns is, as Frank mentioned, the impervious coverage reduction from 40% to 30%. 30% is not a commercial standard for impervious coverage. It's really a residential type standard. And that's evidenced by even the Sparta zoning code, where every other commercial zone in the municipality is 40% or greater. The only properties with 30% coverage are residential. So to just try to imagine developing a commercial property with 30% coverage. So one acre is the minimum lot size in the zone. You would be permitted 13,068 square feet of impervious coverage. The building coverage is 25%. So you could have a 10,890 square foot building and 3,068 square feet of impervious coverage. This would create about eight parking spaces. There would be no driveway, no access, no roadways allowed from that amount of impervious coverage. Under retail parking requirements at a one per 200 square foot requirement, and industrial parking requirements are one per 500 square feet, eight parking spaces would provide for a 1,600 square foot retail building or a 4,000 square foot industrial building. So again, we would have about seven potentially, if you could just break them evenly, lots, one acre lots. There's also just some, I mentioned the 50 feet from Block 12008 Lot 9, that there's supposed to be no touching that site while that site does contain the right-of-way that would go to Gale Court. There's also a requirement to plant shade trees along Route 15, which would be fine, but then a requirement to dedicate the area as perpetual open space, which is unclear to me exactly what that means. If that's a request for a dedication of open space to the municipality, what exactly that means. There's a reduction of the directory sign size from 16 feet in height to eight feet in height, which I would say for a developable area of this size is quite small. The maximum building footprint being reduced to 25,000 square feet is not typical for the area. There are plenty of buildings within Commerce Park and the Wilson Drive development that are over 30,000 square feet. And the existing 40,000 square feet, we think, is sufficient to restrict from something that would be, you know, too large for the area. And then there's also a requirement for, you know, several impact studies on the site. And they seem onerous to me, given the fact that you have a total, really, 16-acre development in an area that's existing, developed for light industrial, commercial, retail, on a state highway. So, you know, traffic studies and really, connection to the highway is state jurisdiction. And there's been numerous studies about development of this area over the years. We also noticed the underground parking would not be permitted. While I don't believe the types of uses that are proposed within the zone would necessarily correlate to underground parking, I think it's just another thing being taken off the table that would, you know, potentially assist in, in developing with these restrictions. So my overall, you know, just to summarize is I think that, you know, the proposal really restricts development on, on the property to the point that I don't think it can be developed under this proposed zone. And I don't think the changes meet the master plan goals of the P C E D Zone, which is to develop the property as a light industrial and retail type of use, compatible with the surrounding area. So the, the proposal really isn't compatible with the surrounding area. It doesn't generate, you couldn't even generate the development that you have on Wilson Drive on this property. And, you know, as Mr. Wilson said, that was why he came before the board and worked with the board on developing the, the current P C E D Zone, which has only been in place for five years. So from a zoning planning perspective, that's not a lot of time. And we would really submit that it should be given some time to, you know, see if it works and allow some time for it to go forward. If, if the board still wishes to see some changes to the P C E D Zone, we would request that you work with us and the Wilson family to come up with changes that meet the goals of the board as well as the goals of the family to have a developable piece of property within the zone. And, you know, that would be a respectful request that we think there could be mutual beneficial changes to the standards without the unintended consequences that we think are coming up from the proposal that we have before us today. And thank you for your time.
So Jessica indicated, and I'm not going to repeat her requests. The feeling that we have is that the restrictions have gotten so severe that we're just being, every bit of life is being squeezed out of this property, to the point that anyone who wants to invest in a, in a commercial development or an industrial development would probably be out of their mind to put their money into this property because of the lack of opportunity of what they could do with it versus the cost of complying with all of the standards. And frankly, the Wilson family felt that what the decisions that were reached back in 2018 had, after a lot of input and negotiation, I guess, and discussions, although they didn't like all of the changes that were made, they, it fit the property. And they were making plans that that would be how the property would be used and, and portrayed. It's just the feeling is, and I guess, and some of you were not present at the council meeting that we were present at, I know there was a public fury about trying to return this property back to being. this property back to being, well, to having it remain a farmland, and that that was the general consensus of some of the people that were in the audience. And of course, that's the last thing that we would want to happen. You know, this, it's getting so, if these restrictions are to be put in force, it's so severe that I believe that it, it just takes away so many of the opportunities and rights and value of the property that at that point, it's, well, if Sparta Township wants it, why not buy it? I mean, at that point. Of course, we're not looking to sell it to Sparta Township. We would prefer to be able to use it consistently with the surrounding area and to have it developed consistent with those. And of course, as you know, the Wilson family has been very successful in developing model developments, industrial developments such as Commerce Park, which, in my experience, in different towns, are often referred to as a model of what the other towns would want to have. They have the ability to make sure that there's something that eventually someday when it gets developed, you're going to love, you know, and it's going to work with the surrounding areas. But these restrictions, we believe, will wind up eliminating that ability to be able to do that type of thing. And with that, if you have any questions or thoughts?
If I could just add one thing that I failed to mention before. Jessica talked about several uses being moved from permitted uses to conditional. And then if you read the conditional uses, one of the first comments is must comply with all design standards. If you've read the design standards, they're extensive. And that's pretty common. Every, every town in New Jersey has design standards and they're important, but they don't, because it's for the whole town, they don't take, they don't write design standards looking at individual properties. So it's very common, and I'm sure if you ask your professionals, it's very common to have waivers, usually design standards or waivers, not really variances, but from various standards. You can't fit all the shrubs that they want, so you fit as many as you can, or maybe the amount of, you know, parking isn't a design standard, usually it's a variance, but some uses don't require the parking that the ordinance contemplated, so you have less, it's a variance. But if you require that a conditional, I'm not interning Frank is, but my understanding, I'm a professional engineer, is that if you don't meet all of the design standards, and that's a requirement for conditional use, I'd have to get a Schedule D use variance to propose that use. So as I read this-
I don't agree with you, Eric.
No, okay.
No, as long as, what that is, is just a requirement that you comply, your, the conditional use is only applicable, a variance from a condition of a conditional use is only applicable to a condition that's relating specifically and solely to the conditional use. So design standards are general, like you said, for the whole town.
Okay, so the fact that they're-
The fact that you seek a waiver or site plan exception from a design standard, even though it's required in a conditional use, is not the kind of condition of a conditional use that you have to get D variance for.
Yeah, well, thank you for that.
It's an important detail, but I don't think that's your real problem. I think maybe it would help the board and certainly the professionals if you would try to elaborate on what you and the family would like to do on the three lots and how they would fit on the three lots or not fit according to, well, your perception.
So-
What would you like to do? Even if it's just alternatives or conceptual ideas. That's what we're here for, conceptual ideas.
Probably a better way to say it, if you don't mind, is you have these surrounding areas, right?
Or if you, if you, if you want to have Jessica explain it, or you want to take some time to talk about it, I don't, we're not trying to rush you into-
Really, our issue with, with these changes is, again, so one of the things Jessica talked about is like, when we look at a development, to produce a development, we look within the zone to meet it to the best of the ability and make it economically feasible. And there's a lot of economic restraints on this property. And in 2018, when we made the zone that's in place today, I say we, the planning board, but I came to several meetings, you know, there was a lot of back and forth and changes and adoptions. I'm not trying to rehash it, just as an example, there's a corner lot on this property. I can speak to it from my, my former employer and career that I did, would have been possibly the most prime location for like a Wawa, because you've got nothing between Jefferson and Lafayette. Now, obviously, there's, in surrounding towns, there's been a little bit more of that in the last couple of years. But five years ago, like the stuff that's up at Ross's Corner wasn't there, the Quick Chicken Lafayette is really new. Understanding that there was not an appetite with Sparta for that, part of our discussion was, you know, let's take that off the table. But that, that was a pretty massive economic concession for the property, because at the corner traffic light, on a southbound side of a state highway, where there is none other gas station in like 10 miles, that was probably the most valuable use for this property that we could have found, and we took it off the table. So we feel like we took quite a bit of concession economically, working with the planning board five years ago, to develop what's here today. And maybe it's not perfect, but we thought it was pretty good. And to, to, when I, when I look at these changes, they, they just feel very arbitrary, they feel very, honestly, it feels like, and I'm not trying to put words in your mouths, I'd have to hear from you, but when I try to discern the intent in it, 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 it really feels like the intent is just to make it not developable without straight out saying it. And I don't know if that's the case, but that's why we wanted to come here and in 2018, the original ordinance kind of did the same thing. And when we stood here and we had these meetings, we were able to make some of those changes so that that wasn't the case. And personally, I don't think any of these changes make, make sense to me as far as what we want to do. The back of the property, I would love to be able to find light industrial tenants for it. But it's not like we just build a building and hope people come and rent it. Usually you got to find the people before you can get the financing and do it. And it's this masterful act of coordination that has to happen to make a development happen. And we haven't even been offered enough time from the last ordinance change to this to even, even make that happen. And we were trying to do it, but it's, it's, it's just a very sudden change that we don't feel is appropriate.
And that's why it's a tough question, Tom.
Well, no, I get it, but I, I, no one said, I didn't say the words, what would you like to do that fit within the proposed ordinance?
Right.
So I'm asking you.
Right.
And I would say this, Eric. A Wawa and the gas station has never been permitted in this zone, not in the-
I believe it was a conditional use of PCED.
It was not permitted in any zone.
Over the acre.
And, and, and it was not hap, it wasn't allowed then. I do respect that you would have liked to have gotten that, but that was never allowed. And it's never going to be allowed because as you learned in the last go around, 2018, the township was very concerned about anything with fuels or fuel products that could contaminate the well that your father, grandfather built and dedicated to the township, which we appreciate. But that is not, those types of uses that involve underground storage tanks of petroleum products are prohibited in the zone. And, and that worked fine, and that's, that's not what you're asking for now, I know that too. So, but conceptually, what are, without using this PCE draft ordinance, what are you interested in doing and where? And that might be-
Things proposed under the current ordinance as it stands today.
Well, okay, I, maybe, maybe we should ask the question this way. If the proposal wasn't as it is, right? So based on, based on what was done in 2018, because we've, we've heard a lot about the history. And I understand you worked with that board, but that's not, that's not us, we're this board. So if you were to develop the lot as it stands right now, because obviously it's still, it still stands that way, nothing's been passed, what would you do with it? What's your vision?
What could you do?
Commercial along the frontage with light industrial behind it, as the zone intends.
So let me just-
Like, I don't-
I think you're going to have to give us a little bit more of a vision, because I mean, you're-
When I say commercial-
Let me, let me just ask you a specific question, if you don't mind.
Yeah.
All right, so you have the map in front of you.
Mm-hmm.
So when you go along Route 15, your at least conceptual vision of a possibility is retail along Route 15, right? To take advantage of that. We've talked about that.
Yep.
And then the industrial, if you had the, if you had the ability to access, if these restrictions weren't here, would likely be toward the rear, not the wetlands area, obviously, right?
Yes, because that's all limits.
And then I know your father was active in subdividing it, so you'll see two smaller lots toward the front and then a much larger lot, which was the remainder, right? And then, and then, was it his, his, at least vision at that time, which continues, was that these three lots would be developed in a kind of a unified plan, right?
Yeah, and when we say retail and I say commercial, if you look across the street where you have, for example, that building with the Starbucks in it, and it's got another retail store in it, and then there's another building adjacent to it that's, I think, got maybe a salad shop and a couple of things like that, those are the types of smaller retail, commercial buildings that would go along the frontage. At the traffic light, I mean, I'd love to be able to attract like a, maybe a larger pharmacy type store or something. But again, the challenge of being able to answer that question is, I have to find a tenant that's willing to, depending on how that works, like-
Well, that's, that's the beauty of concept review, because we don't have to worry about tenants, we have to worry about what your vision would be if you were to, to take the opportunity to develop the property as is. Because in the grand scheme of things, you've had it for five years that way. I know you've been trying to, to work through what you want to work through, but it's not just the board that needs to understand-
Two of those years were like massive economic disruption of-
Right. But the public also needs to understand what the vision would be if you were to develop it as is.
So I don't have a site plan to, to share with you.
No, 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 I, I understand, but when, when we, when we talk about concept, perfect example, you had said that you would like to attempt to attract a, a large pharmacy store at the light. You would like to have certain types of, of retail in the, you know, so that, that gives us, that gives us a vision of what your, your expectation would be.
Some of those small buildings, it's more popular today for some like of the, you know, whether it's fast food, fast casual, like a Panera Bread, is not a fast food, but it kind of is, but not in the traditional sense, if you, if you, if you look at like a store like that. Those stores all have, if you go to one, like there's a Panera Bread by my house or past my house down in Mount Olive, they had built it, standalone store, and they redeveloped it with a drive-through because most consumers want to be able to, you know, pick up their food with their kids in the backseat and not have to get out in the rain. And that's just a demand that those kind of stores want today. And drive-throughs, like those kinds of stores, the reason you put them here is, I mean, yeah, people might drive there because they want the food, but generally, this is a very high traffic area, and it's been that way for 40 years. You, you can attract tenants, this, put a store there because the person sitting in traffic on their way home was, oh man, I would love to get some of that on my way home. So you're not trying to generate trips to the area, you're trying to take advantage of the people that are already there and, and offer them things. And so, so those types of, you know, people used to call them strip malls, but that is kind of a bad connotation because you think of like Route 46 where you've got just these terribly ugly, long, short buildings. But technically, any multi-unit commercial building would be defined as a strip mall. So a modern, better looking version of that, maybe not eight units, you may, you break them up, kind of like North Village did, so you have small, smaller versions of them, but multi-tenant retail places for, for commercial retail stores. And then behind them, because, because those stores are very dependent on visibility, and then behind them, you could have buildings similar to what's in Wilson Drive, which are like flex space, light industrial type things, but there's several buildings that you could drive around that, like there's one, one of the more recently built buildings, and it was actually on Demarest Road, I think it's got six or maybe eight doors, I can't remember. But it's a beautiful building, it's perfect for the area, but it would not be allowed under this ordinance. And it's just not viable to build an entire building for three spaces. To build a building with like six spaces is not double the cost of three. It's more, obviously, but it's more economically viable to make them a little bigger. And so that's, that would be, I mean, I don't, like I said, most of the buildings would probably be multi-tenant. You'd have cus, you know, things facing the front that need to be visible, stores, retail things that people would visit to buy stuff, and then in the back, you could have quieter light industrial flex uses that, you know, there's a lot of companies that do really amazing work that no one probably even knows exists in Wilson Drive because they're machine shops and, you know, they make aircraft parts or, you know, lasers or all sorts of things. And we'd like to be able to attract more of that kind of business to Sparta, and we could offer those kinds of buildings in the rear.
Okay, so if you were, if you had the ability to, to do all of those things, and you, you were at the town council meeting and you've heard a lot of the public opinion, how would you address those concerns?
The public opinion that they want to farm?
Well, not necess, no, not necessarily that they want to farm, but, but the concerns of safety, of traffic, of, you know, flow and, and congestion. How, how would you address those concerns?
I would point them to similar development and that there's, you know, other than the accidents at the traffic light at, at Housers Corner Road and Route 15 that happen on a regular basis in the morning, that's not an issue of development, that's an issue of DOT.
I'm going to ask you a couple of specific questions, okay? You're, you're going to have, this, this obviously is not a design or a concept, but within this property, you would have an internal flow of traffic, correct?
Yes.
And it would go, and it would be designed in such a way that it would go to the various buildings, depending on their purposes, how they're going to be directed, right?
Mm-hmm.
And then you have a, a, an already cut out area going into the traffic light that goes right across to ShopRite, right?
Mm-hmm.
And then there would be main traffic flow going through a controlled traffic light on Route 15.
Yes, and if you look across the street, there's actually, technically, there's two curb cuts on the property. One is the old driveway for the barn that fell down. But you'll notice there's a driveway, it's, it's like a right in, only right out, only driveway. And the purpose of those is, the DOT likes them, because it allows people to get off of the highway easier, reduce traffic, and if anyone does want to get on, they have like a little acceleration lane, so there's no, there's no turning movements allowed at those driveways. So like one of the restrictions is no more curb cuts, but honestly, for safety, you would probably want at least one other curb cut on the highway to let people get off so you don't have this big stack up at the light for people trying to turn right or left in the development, the rights can get in easier. Or like, for example, say you were able to get a coffee shop in there, you would, usually those tenants won't go there unless you can get a right in, right out driveway so that people can come in, get their coffee and go right out and get on their way to work. So actually having a second curb cut would enhance safety on the property and traffic flow. And honestly, I would hire an engineering firm that does traffic engineering and specializes in that to ensure that, you know, all those concerns are addressed for the best that we can. I mean, people being bad drivers is outside of our control.
No matter what happens, right? I mean, they would have to come back to you with a site plan.
Yeah.
And you would have to ensure that it's a safe traffic flow within the property and then coming out onto Route 15. There are, I mean, there are protections there to the public. And I think they will-
I'm sure we would have extensive discussions at that time about the specifics of any of the, you know, various buildings or lots or traffic flow at that time, and we'll deal with it together, make something good.
So any other questions from the Dallas-
Yeah, I do actually.
Yeah.
Yeah, I have two questions. I have a few comments first that I like to go through. So first, thank you for being here. I know this is not a formal hearing. Definitely acknowledge and appreciate you and your family's history in town, all of your contributions. I mean that sincerely. Have you, I know before there was a lot of reference by your planner, I'm sorry, I forget your, your, your name. We've heard a lot about the master plan and the ordinances, but have you considered that the master plan and the ordinances that you referenced a lot could be outdated and they may no longer be appropriate? They're not permanent forever documents, and pieces of them are, pieces of them are quite old, and they're meant to evolve and match the needs of the community over time. We've all collectively noticed and witnessed a lot of significant development and changes, even in the last five or six years. I understand your point. And, and many in the community don't see that as optimal anymore, all that development, to the quality of life and the character of Sparta. There's, there is a cumulative effect of development. So what was okay in the beginning when the first development came in, there is a cumulative effect of repeated additions to development that we need to acknowledge. And, you know- And, you know, whether it's on water, threats to the environment or the aquifer, traffic congestion, quality of life, what have you, there's, the balance of that, of course, is economic development, which is great and, and ratables and everything else, but there is that, there is a cumulative effect of development that we need to acknowledge. And I know this area is obviously very special to your family for a long time. So I really, the first question is, I would like to know, aside from that property, what are your views on traffic and on increase in traffic and on the aquifer? And protecting that resource and on the other possibly negative aspects to more development?
I don't have it handy. I know, you know, it, it may seem like, um, the development is a recent thing. But I know the development across the street was like twenty years in the making. It didn't just happen. You know, you see a building go up and the framing goes up and you're like, wow, that was quick. But, um, extensive work and studies has been done in this area, like the aquifer, I know that an intense amount of work was done on aquifer studies for the development across the street to ensure that nothing would hurt it. And the, the what, there's one, you know, there's a, there's a, there's one well here on this property, but there are more wells on the other side of, um, of the North Village development. So, so they studied extensively and the aquifer that's pumped out of, I believe, is, is quite deep in the ground. And anything on the surface was found to basically have minimal or no impact whatsoever possible on that aquifer. We don't have public water where we are because we're too far off the beaten path, but we have a well and we drink the same water. So ne-, no desire to do anything that would, would impact that, but I think a lot of times people have a, you know, maybe a fear that we don't want to hurt it without taking the in-depth look of what actually would hurt it. And, and so, you know, the job of the development professionals is to, you know, help to explain to people and, and kind of dispel some of those fears. Because, um, while they may be good fears, sometimes we're afraid of things that, that aren't real. And, um, and, and looking at it that way. So environmentally, there's a reason why the DEP passed the laws that they did. That's why there's a three-hundred-foot riparian zone to, uh, class-one trout streams. That's why there's in our area, a hundred-and-fifty-foot exceptional resource wetland buffers that you really can't do anything for a hundred-and-fifty feet to the edge of the wetlands. And there's, there's extensive amount of work, you know, when, when, when this development goes through, getting approval from the Sparta Planning Board is, is not the hard part, generally. It's getting approval from the DOT and the NJDEP. And, um, from a standpoint of looking at this development, there's like probably seven different agencies and reviewers that have jurisdiction over ensuring that there are no harms to the environment, no harm to the aquifer, like, obviously, there's a burden at this body to protect those things, but there's actually a whole bunch of other people who do that too. And, and we have to pass muster on all of those levels. Sorry, I don't, you asked a couple of questions.
I, I agree. I, I do, I do think though, we, we all know very well that permits and waivers and things are granted all the time by NJDEP. We here locally, you're right, have an intense focus on our resources. DEP is spread very widely, very well-intentioned. And, but yet sometimes it's that local knowledge and local attention is really what's needed too. That leads me to my second question, actually. So, uh, earlier and, and on these maps, you've shown the, uh, based on your interpretation, the future, if this was to go through, developable land. And what was the before and after? So, and assuming a lot of this looks like wetlands and wetlands transition areas. So first, I'm assuming that you're thinking there'll be no waivers and no permits, nothing beyond the strict interpretation, otherwise that blue goes down a lot.
Well, there's, there's no, there's no way to just get rid of transition area. It, that's not a thing. The only way that you can, and, and sometimes, and the DEP doesn't just casually issue permits in my experience.
Not casually, but they happen.
Not in any development I've ever been involved with, but, uh, you know, they have a permit to, you know, they call it a buffer averaging plan. So if you can say, hey, you're allowed, you're allowed under a buffer averaging plan to reduce the buffer to fifty percent one area, but you have to make it up somewhere else. And when they review that, they don't just let you do it anywhere. If you can show that an area is not a valuable transition area and then there's another area that's more valuable, they'll say, hey, that's a great idea, we'll move it over there. But, um, the DEP reviews are very intensive in my experience.
So assuming that then, and assuming there's no changes to what's shown on here in terms of, to make it simple, blue and green, wetlands and transition areas. So what is the before-developable land, assuming that large swath of wetlands and all the buffers that you talked about? What is the be-, the true before number, not thirty-seven acres, because we all know it's a lot smaller because
Eighteen.
Just looking at this, it's eighteen? Okay, and then with this proposed, it becomes?
I believe Jessica had mentioned sixteen.
Yeah, so it was sixteen?
Well, it.
We go down about seven.
It went down by seven?
According to our, down to seven acres.
The majority of the lost area here is at the bottom left where you impose the three-hundred-foot buffer zone.
Yeah, but the whole bottom right is made basically wetlands and the center.
Yeah, and, and there's a little, there's a little piece of, there's like a triangular kind of peninsula in the middle that gets chopped by the three-hundred-foot buffer and then the whole back left side, where, where you kind of butt up against the, the back end of the Gale Court development.
And that's the section right next to the wellhead.
Yeah, those, well, right next to it, but it's a pretty big area.
I guess our problem is we can't figure out what the planning board's purposes on these things.
Like, yeah.
So if you ignore the, I think you have an orange line here, right, for a, a three-hundred front yard setback, assuming you're going to build in the back, so ignore that for now. So what is the remaining developable land, developable land using a?
We haven't done exact calculations.
Yeah.
Fifty-foot setback in the front.
I, I'd have to do the math. The, the six, the, the eighteen and sixteen acres includes the, the front, so you lose, uh, uh, it's hard to give you an exact acreage as to, to what you lose. But again, our question is, is more, I guess, for you of, what's, what's the purpose of just further restricting it from, from what was done only five years ago?
We can't figure out why these constraints go toward environmental and traffic that you're talking about. Unless it's to eliminate development, then of course there'll be no traffic or environmental impact. But we can't figure out from a commercial point of view, how this constraints that you're seeking to impose help with traffic, how that's a traffic matter or how it's an environmental matter. The constraints are already there in the wetlands. There's no need to add a buffer over the wetlands on something they can't do with anyway. And the areas then going, continuing across, uh, it's, you, you're wiping out swaths of area that would otherwise be available for development. And that's, that's the concern and we can't figure out the justification. And at least on the limited record that we've been able to see so far on your proceedings, and it's not your fault, it's just that they're not available yet for us to really review thoroughly. We can't figure out your rationale. And that you definitely educate us on that because we're willing to hear what the reasoning is.
So you mentioned constraint a few times. I'm still trying to get a handle on what the new constraint is in terms of acreage. That's, that's where I'm a little bit lost. I mean, look at this.
It's, it's not just the yellow space, it's the fact that within the yellow space, you say, your buildings can be much smaller, your impervious coverage can be much smaller. When, when you take, it's a twenty, twenty-five percent reduction of what's you're allowed to do for impervious coverage. It's a, I don't know the percentage on the building, but it's a substantial. You basically just are kind of, what, what feels at somewhat random, just chopping everything and then saying, well, it's because of the environment, but, but how does any of that protect it any more than it's already protected? We don't feel that it does.
Okay, I understand that perspective. I think it's not just environment, though. I think there's concerns, other concerns beyond that, about traffic, about congestion, about the level of development. You know, we can talk more about that down the road.
I would recommend you direct those questions to the DOT.
I'd like to hear that now. Can you explain that? What are those other reasons?
Well, environment is one, right?
Oh, you, but you said other reasons.
Congestion, traffic, increased traffic.
You said other reasons. De- dealing with reduction in, in development.
Those are, those are two, two big ones, right? So the, the amount of traffic that is coming here will bring congestion to the roads, right? The amount of impervious surface puts, creates more runoff. So if you reduce impervious surface, there's less runoff, right? And the aquifers here, the wetlands are here. The wetlands lead somewhere.
Respectfully, the engineering standards require that you maintain the groundwater recharge, so that's not a concern.
Well, it's a concern if the aquifer's under it. It's a concern if the aquifer's under it.
I guess our concern is that it seems, and it's just our perspective, that there's a rush to create severe constraints on property on assumptions that you haven't possibly gotten some type of support and expertise on yet. And maybe you did, but we don't have it. But you're reaching conclusions about that, like reducing forty percent to thirty percent of impervious coverage somehow is justified by something that we're not seeing what it is. Obviously, reducing the impervious coverage is going to have an impact on reducing, reducing the flow into, for environmental purposes. But we don't understand why you think that is necessary on this property which is being targeted.
Well, the property's not being targeted, let's be clear. You, you say that the property is not being targeted.
What other property in the P C E D zone is having the impact from this?
It doesn't matter which properties are having the impact, Frank. The entire P E C D zone is being amended or proposed to be amended. And your map is not showing the entire P D C E D zone. Just because they're developed doesn't mean that they're not subject to it. And they can redevelop subject to it, so.
Okay, I should say.
I think, I think, I think the inquiry you're making is not going to be the, is not the purpose of this meeting.
Oh, no, I understand.
The purpose of this meeting is for you and Eric, who is an engineer and I respect highly, to tell us what you would like to do with the property.
Well, I thought it was a discussion.
It is.
Because it feels more like a grilling.
I, I thought, from you only, as far as I'm concerned. So I'm stopping that, I'm stopping that grilling now and I, and I'm deferring to your, uh, to your experts. Eric and, and your planner, if you would like to add more, to try to explain your vision of what your property would be used for, perhaps maybe you need another exhibit or something. But Eric explained it fairly well, so we have that, okay? So let's, let's focus on what you would like to do with the property.
But there is a clarification.
And by the way, you can ask for variances from conditions, you can ask for variance from, uh, site, from setbacks, you can ask for variance from coverage. And I don't really agree with Jessica, there are many zones in Sparta, including commercial zones in the town center, they use very low coverage. Very, very low coverage. Seven, four percent, things like that, in order to get an open space as part of the overall tract. So you would look at the town center, uh, limited business and the town center professional business zone to see those techniques of using coverage on large tracks as a way to further tamper down the impervious coverage to further enhance green space, even if private. And I don't think that you'd require on Jessica to donate this to the township to be dedicated to open space along the front. So think in terms of what would you like to ask for, what do you, what do you propose to do
For you?
Before you start packing, we don't want any changes. Because theoretically, you could convince the board and the township council to make changes to the proposed changes, but you may not. And so that's, that's why we're here, so, among other reasons, so. So focus on what you'd like, maybe.
But before we focus on that, just for, uh, one clarification. So the three-hundred-foot setback only applies to properties that are twenty-five acres or more.
That's correct.
So that does not.
That does apply and it, and it is in part exactly what I told you before, it is protecting the, um, well, the green, the green space of the property and protecting the, uh, wellhead protection area, which is directly adjacent to that yellow area that you don't want to be in the red area. So but that is a, is a setback which, for which a C variance could be sought. So for you to say, we can't do anything, that's something you can explain in a, in a C variance application as well. But you're not even saying yet what you want to build. So maybe what you should do is focus in on what you'd like to build or at least get site plan approval for and ask for the relief under any ordinance for that. That way you, you get closer to being able to show exactly what you would like to build.
I think what we're suggesting is that the changes to the ordinance don't seem to have, in our opinion, an understandable purpose from a good planning perspective. We even hired a professional planner to help us understand it and we're left just as confused as before. And sure, we can request variance relief. But the purpose of good planning is to allow for developments that don't require relief because that's the ideal type of development. Lots of developments require it and I've done it before and we'll do it again in, in my career. But the goal tonight is to, and, and our goal five years ago is to create a zone that would allow for a development that's good for Sparta, that doesn't require a whole bunch of variances for, for no reason really at all to just, other than create just additional hurdles to a property that already has quite a lot of hurdles. So while I can't tell, so like Celeste had asked about, um, like what we want to do, so I, I can't tell you what variances would.
Like an example is you, you, you're concerned about twenty thousand square foot limit versus forty thousand square foot limit for the building. And you say other buildings have thirty-five thousand. So is that what you would like, is thirty-five thousand square foot buildings along the, along the road going out to Gale Court? And if so, do they fit in that area of the yellow that is covered by the red? What would, what size would fit there?
I haven't developed a site plan, so I can't answer that question.
I know, and I don't think we're, I don't think you're there yet, but I don't think you have to use assumptions that everything is so negative. That's what I'm trying to encourage you to, to do, is use assumptions that if you lay it out like it works, maybe it, maybe there's a way to do it.
Is it correct that you need a D variance if you request a variance of building size in excess of ten percent beyond what the ordinance allows?
Only height.
Only height, okay. I thought density as well, or is that?
Ten percent of the height or ten percent or ten feet, whichever is greater, I believe, but basically that's for height, not for the size of building. Building size is a C variance. I'm not suggesting you're going to ask for a C variance. I don't even know if you could fit a thirty-five thousand square feet building in the space that is yellow underneath the red next to the road that you may not have to build.
Towards the rear of the property, you absolutely could.
Okay, so that, why don't you lay that out and why don't you propose what you would like to do that is somehow you feel should be identified in the ordinance as being somehow different. Somehow, somehow changed.
Forced into this conversation at this time by your actions.
I don't, nobody's forcing you. I mean, I just.
So Tom, just a couple of.
So I actually want to bring it back to the days for a minute because there, there are a few other questions up here. And I think that might give us a little bit more clarification before we continue to have a, a battle of the attorneys.
Yes, if I may, I mean, I think the intent of this meeting was for you to voice your concerns about the proposed changes that, that you feel are impacting or have the potential impact to your property. You know, prior to, you know, looking at both scenarios, have you done a highest and best use of those parcels before and after the proposed and or looked at other market analysis or market feasibility studies that may have changed due to market conditions and the types of developments you're looking for? Because right now we're just speculating. We hear, I think you've made your, your presentation and the point of your, the reason why you're here tonight very clear. I've listened to every word. I mean, and I respect where you're coming from, it's just a matter of whether it's this one or that one and what you feel is restrictions or not. You know, we're throwing concept developments around or Tom's asking to do some proposed site plans. What, have you, have you studied it a little bit more in detail and then the value of the property from X to Y? Was it assessed properly? Did, did market value change per acre? There's a lot of those driving factors that drive what type of development makes sense for this.
And these are the kind of things that will take time. I mean, there, there just hasn't been enough time to undertake that kind of expert study. The, Mark, do you have any comment on that?
I have a comment.
This is Dan Wilson.
I'm Dan Wilson. And I'm, I'm not commenting because I get emotional. I'm sorry, I apologize upfront to get emotional. But I have to strongly disagree with you, Mr. Collins. We did not come here to propose a concept plan. That was not what was agreed upon at the meeting, at the planning board meeting.
That's why we're here, though, sir.
Well, it was changed. We agreed.
You can talk about whatever you'd like to in a concept.
Nice to speak, please?
Yes.
Without interruption, please. We were, we, we came to the meeting because you, the, these proposed plans severely restricts, severely restricted my mother's property. Mister, sorry, your name, Mister Blumetti made it a request, or made it a demand that we not submit an application. We do not have an application. We're not prepared to give an application. We're not prepared to give a concept plan. We don't have a concept plan.
I don't think I requested that, I'm sorry.
Well, then.
That you submitted an application?
You demanded that we not.
At the council meeting.
Submit an application until we had this meeting.
That we had to give an assurance that there would be no applications.
And then it was extended again because.
It wasn't a demand, it was a request that you agreed to.
Sure.
Yeah, and that, that, it was taken into account by the council that evening.
Changed my word from demand to request. But, we were, we, we agreed to not submit an application, which is a con, we, we're not prepared to give a concept plan. He's, he's, you're, he's basing his knowledge on his engineering ability, his, his, his professional. He's a smart kid, he's my son.
Yes, he is.
He's, he's trying to give answers based on your questions. Well, we have questions that we want answered. And that's why I, that's my impression of why we came here tonight, was to get some questions answered, as to what was the rationale? What is the purpose? And Mr. McGovern, our attorney, just asked that question. What was the reasoning for the, the three hundred foot buffer, which we started getting answers and then we pulled back? If we're not gonna get any answers to any questions, I think it's, the meeting's in vain.
Well, no.
You're here, so.
So, the, when, when we, we're at the council meeting. This, the council referred this back to you, for review. It was our understanding that there would be a discussion, that you would get some, get input from us. There'd be some discussion back and forth to see what, you know, to review, review the draft ordinance. I know it's labeled as a concept plan on the agenda, but we didn't come here with the idea of having to present a concept plan for a specific.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not saying you have to present a specific concept plan. The reason we are using conceptual review is that is the informal review that gives the board jurisdiction to talk to you, okay?
It doesn't give them jurisdiction to make substantial changes to the zone?
Actually, the board doesn't really change the zoning. The township council changes the zoning. The board recommends a zoning ordinance and recommended the changes to the P C E D zone. So, yes, the board.
They created changes, and then.
And they're not adopted yet. They're recommended by this board to that, to the council. So, we appreciate you coming. And my, the only reason I was suggesting to try to talk about what you envision is to actually see if you, what you envision is that far apart from what the ordinance proposes. Because I'm not so sure it's as far apart as you are envisioning it to be. And I did definitely think that Jessica had a broad brush approach to her view of the ordinance, which was not consistent, actually, with what the township planning, planner has been working on, or what township engineer, board engineers were working on. So, we disagree as to what the effects are, and we disagree about your understanding of the negativity of it. You can always ask for changes, you know? What would you like to change? But the recommendation out of this board has been that draft ordinance.
Right, and what we're, what we're asking for, obviously, is that the board takes some more time, take a closer look again. You've heard a lot of the concerns from the Wilson family. And, take, take those concerns into account. And if we're, if you're looking for more detail as to what the Wilsons could, would, let's say, envision as to the property, and I'm sorry, we didn't come prepared. It's a great question, but we just weren't ready to give you kind of a, here's how things would fit onto this property. The main thing we're looking for, obviously, is flexible, the kind of flexibility that exists under the current ordinance. And that, that flexibility, at least in our professional planners, and she's obviously got a great reputation, and Eric's point of view in the family, is being taken away, or severely, severely reduced. This certainly doesn't expand flexibility. It, you know, there's the reductions in things that could be done on the property are very palpable. And that's, so we're, we're asking that you take a very serious look, perhaps another review with more input. I, I mean, give us time to be able to get more information to you. Ultimately, I think what the council's looking for is for your review and input, and then probably a supplemental recommendation, whether to reconfirm it, to change it, to do whatever, based upon the discussions and input that we would have. I would ask if the board would allow, and I know we're taking a lot of volunteer time in people's lives, and we appreciate it, that you give us a chance to come back after looking at it, and especially with the questions that Tom has asked, and the chairwoman and everybody else, to be able to give you more specific idea of what the Wilsons would imagine with this property. And that, so you could take that into account.
If, if I may, Frank, just, just, I guess a final conference. If, if any of your other questions, I'm happy to try to do my best to answer them. But, as I said, you know, if you look at, like, the development across the street, like I said, that was like fifteen years of work before a single shovel went in the ground. And, in essence, it feels like we established the rules of the game, and then we set forth to play it, and then suddenly, the rules are changed. And it feels arbitrary, and it makes it really hard to win. And it feels designed to make me lose. That's how I feel. Obviously, it's feeling, it's not necessarily any one thing that does that, but, but that, that's why we're here tonight. And, and I, I just hope you can appreciate that. But, any, any other questions, I'm happy to.
Well, I, I do wanna make a comment, because I, I appreciate where you're coming from, a hundred percent. It's one of the reasons why we consented to have this conversation, because it is a conversation. Let's just, let's just be clear. This is, this is not a, a adversarial situation. This is a collaboration. I think one of the takeaways needs to be, if we, if we're gonna find a middle ground, the only way we can do that is together. So, the, the questions that we, that, that I know I asked in particular, you know, I don't have an engineering degree, so I need to, I guess at times you need to talk to me like I'm five. This way, you know, if I, I know if I can understand it, then the general public can, can understand it, that those concerns that are out there, that prompted what this planning board is looking to do, and, and in terms of reworking the master plan overall, in terms of taking a look at all of these vulnerable zones, and understanding the climate as it stands right now, and, and trying to protect certain areas with what we know based on the developments that have happened over the course of the last few years. And to your point, yes, it's fifteen years before a shovel hits the ground. But then the problem is that five years later, here we are with the impact of things that weren't even considered fifteen years ago. So, that's what we need to be mindful of when we're putting together a new master plan going forward. Where is this gonna land twenty years from now? And, and that's why, when we take a look at these zones and the vulnerabilities that are there, that's why the logic is, okay, we have a wellhead here, how do we protect that? How do we preserve that going forward? I mean, even if, even if it were to stay in terms of, of farmland, right? I, I know a lot of people say, "Well, it should be agricultural, that's not damaging." Any farmer will tell you, as soon as you put a till to the ground and overturn that ground, it's, you know, you're, you're upheaving an ecosystem, right? That, that's the way it works. Every time, every time a development happens, something happens, you disrupt an ecosystem. So, we're trying to be mindful of those things. We're trying to understand how development overall in this space can be done responsibly, can be done with the benefit of the family in mind, with the benefit of the public in mind, with the benefit of overall Sparta in mind. And we really wanna come to that consensus together. We don't wanna be, we don't want you to walk away feeling like there's a moratorium on your property and that's it. We don't, you know, we're not listening to you, because that's not what this is, and that's not what it's about. Because we do respect the Wilson family, and because we do understand that whether it's the Wilson family, or the Smith family, or the Luciano family, if you're a Sparta citizen, and you're a landowner here, and you're, you know, you're contributing your time, your materials, your whatever, to this community, we want to be mindful of and respectful of your wants and your needs. So, I think the conversation to, to Frank's point needs to continue, absolutely, a hundred percent, so that we can all just understand a little bit clearer, a little bit better. And to everyone else's point, yes, variances can happen, certain things, negotiations over time. But I think what I personally would like to see is, what, what, what's your wish list? If you were to, if you were to take this property with all the concerns that we have in mind, and you were to design an ordinance, and if you were, because you're a member of a planning board, if you were to design an ordinance change that you are going to propose to your town based on this situation, what would your, what would, what would you come up with? And I think that with that in mind, we can come to consensus.
Okay, so, if I may, I asked about some of the engineering questions. Just in conversation, I realized I didn't quite maybe address all of Councilman Blumetti's questions. So, if I may, from an engineering perspective, and Mr. Simmons hopefully can back me up on this, unless I misread it. But, so, the stormwater concerns, the, the groundwater recharge and aquifer concerns, how stormwater is handled on a site, unless it's less than an acre, or less than a quarter acre of impervious coverage, which is not this site, it's called a major development. And then that triggers a whole bunch of regulations from the N J D E P that have to be met. So, N J seven colon eight, I believe, addresses those stormwater issues. And that was recently revised by the D E P. Probably in, in light of, as Councilman Blumetti said, times change and they recognize that things need to adapt. So, I believe one of the changes that they made recently is to, you know, before it was like, we kinda encouraged you to use non-structural stormwater management strategies. And now, it's much more of a forceful encouragement, perhaps. But, you have to address with every development, it's a major development, the quantity of stormwater leaving your site, the quality of the stormwater leaving your site, and the groundwater recharge. The groundwater recharge has to be maintained, the groundwater quality. You have to treat the runoff from parking lots and things. You can't just let it go. It has to go through some sort of natural filtration process to remove any contaminants. Nature is some of the best contaminant cleanup that there is. And the groundwater, the quantity of the runoff, there's a couple ways to address it. You can either reduce it in all scenarios over all time, which you can't really do when you build a development. So, then you have to actually reduce the peak flows compared to what's there today. So, that's why you see these huge stormwater basins on properties. Because if one cubic foot per second of water leaves today, you actually have to be less after you develop it, you have to improve it. You have to show that the quality is addressed. Building roof runoff is perfectly clean, there's no contaminants up there. So, that water, if you can recharge it into the ground, that's why people put dry wells in, or infiltration basins, is to actually encourage more water to get into the ground, more clean water to get into the ground. So, a lot of those concerns, respectfully, are addressed at the time of the development in multiple, you know, stormwater management reports that, I'm sure if you go back and look, some of them are hundreds of pages to address how each of those concerns is, is handled, and it's required to be that. So, and to, to your last question about the wish list, we're happy to do that, but obviously, we can't do that tonight.
Right, and, and I think, I think that this is, is a great first step in, in, you know, moving forward with the process and understanding more of what, of what your, your wants and needs are in, in terms of the property, and how we can come to, to an agreement on what's best for the space and for Sparta overall. I don't, I don't think that that's, I don't think those, those were, I don't think what we're discussing is unreasonable in, in any specific respect. And, and because the, the ordinance is, is not passed, not approved, then it's just, it's just a suggestion. We've, we've proposed a change, and it's still sitting with the town council, and it's going to continue to sit there until it's, it's either voted up or down on their desk.
If I could just ask one question of you guys. We've had a lot of discussion about the wells. And then, also at the same time, until, you know, we've seen all this development. As this, I'm sure Sparta Water regularly tests the water and, and monitors that. It, has there ever been an adverse impact on our water from any of the developments that's there today? I'm not aware of any. I, I don't, I don't know if you have the answer to that, but.
I don't have the answer to that, we have to ask probably a township manager or engineer.
Yeah. But I, I imagine if there was, we would all know about it, because people would be very upset. But, I'd encourage, you know, maybe you guys can, can talk to the town water department and get that information.
So, what we could do is go back with our planner, obviously, and go through these revisions, I guess, and make suggestions of what we would like to see based upon the property and what the Wilson family knows about the property, et cetera. And then, I'll work with Eric and his dad to present, to, to kinda give you an idea more specifically of what the possibilities are on the property, so you could take those into account.
I would just also add for context, it was mentioned before a few times that this was arbitrary. I, I think the planning board definitely does not agree with that, would probably take offense. There was a, a overwhelming desire and expectation that we look at this zone, and that was something we felt strongly about. We engaged our professionals as well, so our attorney, our planner, a lot of volunteer time, and, and finances were spent to look at what was best for the community in terms of the zone. So, I, I disagree with the word arbitrary, just so you know the context as well. And there still is that concern and that need out there. So, if we are going to delay, and I, I don't wanna see anyone have a win-lose situation as well, Eric, you mentioned before about winning, losing.
Right, I don't believe this is a win-lose situation either.
But I will say that there is still a ticking clock in our minds that we are concerned about, my words, maybe overdevelopment, whatever, you can call it whatever you want, we can talk at length about pros and cons. But I would say that if we are at risk of delaying for the process, and then having this, again, go up for sale or be sold, then I think that was, that's not really something that we are, we'd feel would be fair either on our end. So, I guess we would continue, "I'm not gonna demand, we're not gonna demand". We would ask that if we are gonna spend more time and post, you know, have another conversation, I think that's the right thing to do. But, we also would want an assurance as well that in the middle of that process, nothing's gonna change dramatically where it's, you know.
No, we understand that. There, there's not gonna be any application while you're reviewing this. Appreciate your time.
One last thing before, before, before you walk away. I, I would like to open it up to the floor for any potential questions for the public to address any of their concerns. This way, when you walk away, you walk away with a holistic view of what it is that, that people are looking for and what we need.
All right, questions or comments?
Hi, my name is Ron Peoples. I live in Lafayette Fiddler's Way, thirty-five Fiddler's Way. I hope when this is all done, that, you know, both, both sides are, are happy, because I would understand the Wilson side, that they made a significant investment, and they should be able to benefit from that investment. Just, I completely agree with that. My concern is safety. I see Route fifteen all the time. And it, you know, I think that Mr. Wilson had mentioned the, the daily traffic accident on Route fifteen. I see him. And correct me if I'm wrong, but the traffic, there's been traffic studies that has been the result of the diamond chip discussions, right? And correct me when I'm wrong. It's my understanding that the traffic studies, the results have come back, that the traffics already have been exceeded for that, for Route fifteen. So, if that is the case, then I, I don't, you know, I just wanna throw out for safety purposes, that there needs to be a result that does not have a negative impact on traffic. Because I, I'll tell you, from my perspective, you know, I, I think that the situation is, decisions were made. is decisions were made, Shoprite went in and all of these other, you know, these, these other stores, and then we realized that a mistake had been made. We had not taken into consideration the amount of traffic that's going to be the result of this. And now we're going back and we're trying to say, okay, we made a mistake. Okay. And now we're looking at, this is going to result in more traffic, but I think we need to take into consideration that the mistakes of the past, you know, should not result, you know, in mistakes in the future. And I understand that, um, you know, compatible uses from across the street from Shoprite and things like that, I totally get it. I, I, but the bottom line is just because that's across the street doesn't mean that we add more after we've realized our mistakes. So I just wanted to state that because it's a safety hazard. Um, I live in Fiddler's Way. Not only do I see, you know, the results of, if you look at the guardrails, they're destroyed and numerous, happens all the time. I can sit back, you know, sitting by my pool, listen to the traffic and all of a sudden, bam, there's another one. Let's go see, right? Let's see what's happened. It, that, that's what life is right there on 15. So I just want to throw that out so that everybody is aware. Thank you for the time.
Thank you for the comment.
Mark Scott, ninth Weblo Parkway. I just wanted to ask why the Wilsons haven't, uh, met with the State Agricultural Development Committee. The representative for the committee has contacted the Wilson's lawyer and the Wilsons should at least sit down with him and hear what they have to say. Could that be done or is that a beating you would take?
I've talked with the SADC and, uh, I'll be talking about it with Mike Hyde further.
Okay. Thank you. What's, what has the impact been already of development that's been there? We had the environmental, what was it, the Highlands Commission, Highlands Council, they were in here, they gave us a very extensive report of the many, many pockets of deficits of water that we have there already. I mean, there's concerns and... And, and I think that that obviously has to be studied. Sitting on top of the aquifer, got this massive possible warehouse coming, you've already had impact from the Shoprite and now we have to figure out what we're going to do here. And like Mr. Peoples said, okay, so maybe we made some mistakes, but it's our town and let's correct the mistakes. Thank you.
Um, I thought it might just be valuable after hearing all of this really good conversation about development and in town and with people that own the property and have given so much to the community that I think people know your property when it was the Sunflower Farm. And I know you don't want to hear that people want to hear, we want you to keep it a farm, but the impact of the other properties around that have made us really appreciate that as a history of our town. And if there was some way that, what, anyway, if you can't even work with that, I just wanted you to know, people love you for that. Thank you.
Just a comment about that, I think the traffic was worse with the sunflowers, but...
Anyone else?
I live at Houses Corner Road. I'm a, a town resident as well. The traffic on Route 15 is, I've lived here 60 years. Forty-five of the years I, you know, when I was a little kid, I don't remember everything, but for quite some time. That traffic on Route 15 has been there for 40 years. It's a little more intense now, but before the railroad crossing was moved, before the bridge was across the railroad crossing, you couldn't get out on, if it was a blinking light at Houses Corner Road, there was tons of accidents there. You got Chief Rex, that he can confirm that. Wilson Drive and, uh, let's cross the street.
Whitelake Road.
Whitelake Road. When we built Commerce Park, this DOT made us put two lights. Remember those, Ernie? Two lights. We didn't want it, we wanted to put it together, made more sense, but the DOT made it separate. So we did a separate. That traffic, that, that, that intersection, and correct me if I'm wrong, I believe was the most dangerous intersection in northern New Jersey or Sparta or it was noted as the most dangerous intersection. That was the DOT did that. So that traffic has been an issue for a long, long, long time. We moved, they moved the road to make it straighter and all those accidents went away. So there is ways to correct it. The other thing, um, in the summertime, the fair, traffic backs up every night. If you go this morning, I have a friend of mine, it was so, just on yesterday, he went five o'clock in the morning, he went to make a left-hand turn to go into his business on Route 15. He had to wait 20 minutes because all the traffic coming from out of town, going through town, he couldn't get it crossed. That's traffic, but it's not, it's not, none of those cars went into North Village, they were going to work and at nighttime, they're coming home from work. We can't control that. And Lafayette, they just approved three or four warehouses. More traffic's coming from that too. So whether you see it as an attack on our property, I see it as an attack on my property, my mother's property. I'm not saying you guys are attacking me, I'm not, don't, it's not a personal thing, but this ordinance is, is basically making, like Jessica said, a useless piece of property. There's no value for the amount of money that you have to spend to do the DOT improvements and to get the approvals. There, there's a, there's, when you do a development, you got to look at the, what it costs you to do it all versus what you can sell it for in the end. And if, and if the cost to do it more, it costs more than what you can sell it for, it's, it's useless. And that's what we, I believe, speaking as an individual, that's what I believe this ordinance is doing to our property. And you can say whatever you want, it's targeting our property. It's talking about the only piece of property, yeah, the other pieces were added into it in, in 2018 when my son met with the, with the, the planning board to discuss it. It was only our property and the Dykstra's property across the street. That's what the P, the P.
CD.
CD, whatever that zone was in 2018. They added those couple of things, those other couple of properties, I believe, because somebody wanted a roadway to go through. And then when they, then when, because that was on the, it was on the, uh, proposed, um, changes, zone change. When we met with them, we said, well, you can't do that because there's a, there's a septic here, there's a building here, there's a, uh, the New Jer, um, telephone company has a burial wall of all the, all your cable TV and everything underground, right where they wanted to put the road through. So you couldn't do it. The only way to do it was through the back. So your zone, your 300-foot buffer, we can't put it, we can't, we can't put that through because you can't go through the buffer. How can you go through the buffer with a road? So you, you, we can't do what you want us to do with that road to go into Wilson Drive. So enough said there, but the last question is, how do I get the minutes from this board? There's about 12 meetings that I cannot access minutes or video or anything on from last year. How do I get, how do I go about getting them? As well as the environmental committee and as well as the subcommittee that did all the, this work. How do I get the minutes from those meetings?
The unfortunate circumstance is that because of the issues that are going on with the municipality and in the town manager's office and staffing, those minutes are not currently available. We're working on the, well, I shouldn't say the planning board because it's not really us, but we are working on the problem from our side. Unfortunately, at the end of the day, don't have a good answer for you. I wish I did because I, I can tell you that we're just as frustrated.
Well, there are tape recordings, um, sorry.
They're not on, they're not on.
I didn't say they were on the website. There are tape recordings, there are digital recordings and you can have access to those in their entirety with, and they are verbatim. So they're better than minutes, in other words. So, uh, Dory, Frank asked Dory for the video, audio recordings. I didn't say they're video. There, there are audio recordings of the planning board meetings. I'm, I'm not, I don't speak for the environmental commission, so I'm not talking about them. I don't know. But for the planning board, or Dory can provide you with the audio recordings and then you can listen to them, you can have a sonographer transcribe them if you want to. So in answer to your question, the township is taking those audio recordings, I believe, and trying to, I believe, hire a sonographer to transcribe them, but that takes time and money, but there are audio recordings.
And for the environmental commission, many of them from last year are online and also there's a lot of YouTube recordings, once we instituted the ordinance to do YouTube recordings.
I did see a few, but I, I made a list and there's considerable amount of both that are missing, that there's no record of.
When did we start recording our videos on, streaming our, our meetings on YouTube?
We started in May.
I think our original proposal, um, from the subcommittee should, should be on YouTube. And each meeting after that.
Yes, the presentation for, from, the presentation regarding.
Yep.
The PCD proposal will definitely be on YouTube.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anyone else in the public?
Good evening, Kathy Ebbencousen, Scudders Road. During the testimony tonight, or I shouldn't say testimony, during the discussion tonight, excuse me, you said you wanted to take advantage of the traffic that's already there on Route 15, Mr. Wilson. I would say that anything else built in that section will of course add to that traffic. So that's something you'd also need to consider. And finally, I'll leave you with this, if you really do care about this town the way you say you do, you won't add any more traffic to the problem we already have. Thank you.
Good evening. Uh, okay. My name is Jeffrey Ramirez, a resident, hi. Uh, is this free-for-all? Can I say anything?
It is, it's open portion, so please, uh, please take your address.
Okay, so talking about highway, my address?
Yep.
Skyview, Skyview, everybody knows what golf course is, right? Um, so, um, 15, 15 north, is it? There's a leakage on the highway, on the one of the bridges. How could I help to correct that? How do we bring in investments to fix that leakage? Because it's been going on for like over a year, two years, and it doesn't look nice in our township, a leakage that could be fixed. It's water and the winter's coming and snow and everything, so.
Hi Jeff. Jeff, that's, even though.
I want to help.
Okay, and, and I appreciate that, but we're, the planning board does not, um, the, the board is here to talk about this.
It's part of the highway, right, sir?
Is it near this?
Yeah.
Oh, all right. No, right here is, uh, uh, all I wanted to say is, um, the planning board does not, is not involved, is no authority with respect to.
The bridge.
Making improvements to bridges.
And having leakage.
That's DOT and.
For this people of our town.
The planning board hasn't.
We drive by it every day.
I appreciate it.
We're talking about traffic, we're talking about all this, but if we can't even.
That particular item, the planning board has no jurisdiction about, even the governing body technically doesn't repair the bridges of Route 15. That's Route, that is basically DOT's improvement, uh, New Jersey DOT's improvement. So maybe if you.
Department.
New Jer, I'm sorry, New Jersey Department of Transportation, uh, state agency, uh, because of state highway, including their bridges. Sometimes their county bridges, but that one I think is the state bridge.
So we have a long way to start. If we want to fix this traffic correction and we want to bring warehouses, we, we have to focus on everything, sir. This is all part of our town. It's not about one single thing, it's everything. So if we want to fix this traffic issue that's coming along, we want to bring warehouses, we have to go way back to 1845 and see what the fathers really wanted for this township, right? But if we're going to fix that, we got to fix the simple stuff, the leakage, the, the bridge. Like you said, we have, you guys have the authority to talk to the higher-ups and get that going on. I hope you guys resolve everything else. Good evening, thank you.
Okay. Anyone, uh, have anything else relative to the proposed PCD zoning standard and the Wilson property? Um, anything else from Wilson family or representatives?
No more representatives.
No, no more representatives? No.
I used to say thank you for the time, that's all.
Thank you.
And any other, last questions from the, the dais, any of us, everyone? So thank you very much for being here with us and like I said before, I think this is a great open, opening to, to the conversation. I really think we can come to a decision that, that's beneficial for everybody all around. We just need to keep talking.
Should we contact, um?
You can contact Dory. Yeah, absolutely. You can contact Dory and we can keep the conversation going.
Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
I hope you get out early tonight.
Yeah. Me too.
We're going to take a five-minute recess.
I still ask you.
Hi.
Good job.
Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I hope you get out early tonight.
Uh, we're going to take a five-minute recess.
I still ask you-
Hi.
We have to go back into session. Do we have to vote on that?
Well, we were just taking a recess. So I don't think it's an official motion, but... Um... Actually, let me... Okay, we are going to come back into session from recess. Uh, we had an item on the agenda regarding ordinance 18-53H for parking design standards, review and discussion. We're going to be moving that to our meeting on November 1st due to time constraints. And I will ask that all board members please be familiar with that portion of the ordinance for that discussion on November 1st, please. The, uh, the parking? Oh, okay. Okay. So with that, I would like to open the floor to the public for items that are not on the agenda. Anyone? Okay. That being said, we are going to have an executive session this evening to discuss attorney-client privileged matters and contract issues. There will be no action taken subsequent to the closed session. May I have a motion to enter closed session?
So let me just dictate a resolution for that, Madam Chairman. Actually, we have a written resolution that you, that basically says the following. It says that we are going, motion to go into closed session pursuant to section 7 and 8 of the Open Public Meetings Act to discuss matters of attorney-client privileged communication, pending litigation, Diamond Chip Realty LLC versus Township of Sparta Planning Board and Non-Dash versus Township of Sparta Zoning Board and Planning Board and Diamond Chip Realty, the matters to be, and personnel, the matters to be revealed to the public upon completion of all litigation and appeals and the removal of the need for confidentiality. Is there such a motion?
Yep, so we have a motion and a second?
Yeah, second, I'll second.
And roll call, please.
Roll call vote, please.
Counselman Dean Blumetti.
Yes.
Jeanette Burke.
Yes.
Vice Chairman Ronde.
Yes.
Christine Dunbar.
Yes.
Bill Enright.
Yes.
Justin Canello.
Yes.
Angela Cassi.
Yes.
Chairwoman Select Luciano.
Yes.
Ernest Rexström.
Yes.
And Maxime Edmond.
Okay, great.
Good night.
Can I have a motion to bring this out of closed session, please?
Motion to take this out of closed session.
Second? Yay or nay?
Yay.
Yay. Okay. So let us, now that we are out of closed session?
We're gonna open the door.
Door's already unlocked.
Let's roll up for doors.
Come in!
Come in, anybody out there?
So, if we were to unlock the doors?
Mark's sorry he's still out there.
It is unlocked, okay, great. So now that we are back in open session, can I have, Ernie? Can I have a motion to adjourn?